Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
We are, due to the pandemic, we are still meeting in the Columbus Civic Center and occasionally, excuse me, technology reminds us just how tricky it can be. So we're starting just a few minutes late today. We hope you'll forgive us. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our council meetings, and that is by asking God's blessings and presence during these proceedings. Pastor James Lee from Promise Land Christian Ministries. Pastor Lee, welcome, sir. Please come to the podium and if you would, lead us in prayer. If you should have a button on there, sir, if you'll push that button that says microphone, I'll get it turned on.
It's on? Okay. The devil is already beating you. Thank God for you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. And as we come and reason together, we ask that you come in the midst. Oh, Lord, with you just throw your weight around so that we can reason together and come to conclusions and come to decisions. And Father, I thank you for the mayor and the city council that you have put in place according to your word and your will for this city. So Father, as we come together and Lord, and we reason together and we come and collaborate, Father, please come in the midst. If things that we can't understand and things that we can't come together with and things that it seems like it's just seem we not reasoning together, Father, you take control. Well, we start, Father, you start, Lord. What we cannot do, you do. Go where we cannot go, do what we cannot do, see what we cannot see, gather together what we cannot gather together. And we ask that you bless this area, bless this time, bless this moment. We glorify you and we thank you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Lee, thank you, sir. And please thank you, church, for sharing you with us today.
Oh, it was our pleasure.
Thank you, sir. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 27th, moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? Second by Counselor House. Any edits, any discussion, questions about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed with no? All right, they are approved. We have, as we continue, continue working our way through 2020, it continues to be a strange and challenging year. And I'll give you a quick update on our COVID numbers. And I'll begin again, as I have many times, by congratulating and thanking and commending the people of this community. By and large, the individuals of Columbus have decided to proactively watch out for one another. And they've done so by social distancing, they've done so by doing things that we probably should be doing all the time anyway, like washing our hands, and they've done so by wearing masks when they're unable to socially distance from one another. We continue to see our numbers well below that of comparable sized cities, despite the fact that our economy is moving as well as it can under such conditions. We are seeing a seven day rolling average right now of around 16 cases. That means the last seven days have averaged about 16 cases each day. And that was somewhat skewed because we had one day when we jumped up to almost 30 new cases, but we had 12 new cases as of yesterday. And of course, we've shared with you before that the number that we really kind of monitor is that hospitalization rate. It has, like our other numbers, gone up just a little bit, but it's still very manageable from the perspective of our hospitals. As of yesterday, when the report was pulled, we were at 50 confirmed COVID diagnosed patients in both or all of our hospitals. And that's, I think that's good. Now, keep in mind, we are just coming up on what will begin two weeks from Halloween. And there were a lot of get togethers and there was some door to door trick or treating and some other events that we're hoping don't have a negative impact on our numbers. We also hit a level of number of cases per 100,000 individuals that dropped below 100. That's great, great news. One casualty of that was though, we had to interrupt enforcement on our ordinance requiring a mask. And we have edged back up, so we're right at that 100 threshold again. So we will monitor that. And as that starts to continue to show up in that range over the next couple of weeks, we will likely revisit the reinstatement of the enforcement component. But without a doubt, that is what has helped us, I think, keep our numbers as low as they have. So I would just urge you to continue to do what you've done. Don't let up. Most of the scientists are telling us that because of the colder weather and a lot of activities moving indoors, the holiday season, which is typically when you bring in not just your family, but extended family and friends, there's a very good chance that we will see some uptick. So just continue to do what you're doing and we'll make sure that that is a very modest increase, we hope. Next, we've got a couple of proclamations. We haven't been doing a lot of our proclamation meetings, and that's a shame because it gives us an opportunity to lift up some special people doing great things in our community. But we do have a couple today. And I think Counselor Barnes is going to read the first one. It's a proclamation, it's the Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., Day. Hit your button, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Will the fraternity, anyone here representative of fraternity?
Mr. City Manager, you going to step out front?
I was wondering what was happening with the city manager. He needed to be up there. All right, the proclamation reads thusly. It says, whereas the brothers of Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., celebrated its 75th anniversary, seen service, excellence, and uplift under the leadership of Basilisk Travis L. Chambers with over 100 members. And whereas on May the 14th, 1945, eight brothers received the charter for the Lambda Iota Chapter from the 17th Grand Basilisk Z. Alexander Louby. And whereas in spite of current world circumstances, the Lambda Iota Chapter were blessed to have the means and a platform to celebrate this significant milestone during a virtual meeting on Thursday, May 14th, 2020. And whereas from that day to date, the brothers of Lambda Iota Chapter have provided faithful service and leadership to Columbus, Georgia, and the surrounding communities. And whereas the idea of creating a chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc. in Columbus, Georgia originated in the minds of four Florida AMM University graduates stationed at Fort Benning, Georgia. Brother Leo T. Harrison, Brother James Al Green, Brother William, Bill Adams, and Brother Charles Carey. These brothers believed Columbus could greatly benefit from the level of civic and moral leadership that this fraternity has to offer. And whereas with this concept in mind, these four Omega men met with four other Omega men, Brother E. E. Farley from Morehouse College, Brother A.J. McClung from Tuskegee Institute, Brother Nelson McMillan, former scholar at Clark College, and Brother B.T. Folks, a graduate of Atlanta University at the local USO in Columbus. And whereas after several meetings, Brother E. E. Farley inquired through the National Office of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., regarding procedures and credentials necessary to form a chapter. The brothers responded appropriately and petitioned the National Office for a charter. On May 14th, 1945, a charter was issued from their National Office for the establishment of Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., Columbus, Georgia. And whereas the Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc., maintains a strong presence throughout the city. Over the past 75 years, the Lambda Iota Chapter has provided food to many families in need, given over 600,000 in college scholarships for young aspiring men and women, provided hundreds of meals during Thanksgiving holidays, and educated and encouraged citizens regarding their rights and duty to register and vote. And whereas the mayor and city council and citizens of Columbus, Georgia join the men of Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, Inc. on their 75th chapter anniversary and extend best wishes for continued success in life's pursuits. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, B. H. Skip Henderson does hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, as the Lambda Iota Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi, Inc.
Thank you for that presentation, Councilman Barnes. To our mayor, Skip Henderson, just want to say thank you for all that you have done as far as your contributions to Lambda Iota through our Purple and Gold Golf Tournament. And as the proclamation states, this has allowed us an opportunity to provide young women and young men, an opportunity to further their education. To city council members, many of you have supported Lambda Iota, we want to just say thank you. We will continue to serve our community because Columbus is our community, our city, and we love Columbus. But I have to recognize behind me these great men because we would not be able to do any of this without them. I want to recognize first, our bossless elect, Brother Antonio Ornes, if you would raise your hand. He will be the next president of the chapter. I want to recognize our city manager, Isaiah Hughley, who has served as bossless, as foundation president over the years. Thank you for your leadership. I'm going to have to, y'all bear with me because I'm going to have to call their names or they're going to jump on myself. I want to recognize Judge Ben Richardson for his service. Adrian Chester is currently our foundation president. Thank you for all that you do. Brother Tyrone Thomas, thank you. He's a retired detective with the city of Columbus. Brother Vincent Gavin, Brother Wilson, Brother Walter McKee, he's our upcoming vice bossless. I have to recognize our spiritual leader here, our chaplain, Dr. Michael Forte with Muskogee County School District. Brother Darren Daniels, he's a firefighter with Columbus. Thank you for all you do. My daddy, Tommy Chambers, put your hand up, everybody knows him. And last but not least, in our fraternity, we have a state representative. And I have to recognize Brother Marvin Broadwater, Sr., our past immediate state representative, our past bossless in the fraternity. And Brother Hunter, good to see you. Did I leave anybody else out? All right, thank you all. Again, thank you, Brother Mayor. Council, women and men, thank you for all that you do for Columbus. And we are delighted to receive this proclamation. God bless you and God bless Columbus. Thank you.
Just a second. Counselor Huff has a comment.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. We tease each other all the time, but this is a special day for you all. Congratulations on your anniversary. And just a little tidbit to let you know, I've been kind of close to you all for a long, long time. Besides supporting your events and everything, Leo T. Harrison, one of the founders at FAMU, is my brother Kenny's godfather. I don't know if Brother Antonio Ornes knew that or not, but the Harrison family. Your founder, Leo T. Harrison, not only did great things in life, but he is in the Hall of Fame at FAMU for football and boxing. And his wife is in the Hall of Fame there for track and field. So congratulations, you all have done a great work here. And I've worked with Brother Ornes in the past when my kids were coming up in the Boys and Girls Club. And you all were always there for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and other events, making sure everything happened. So appreciate everything you do and enjoy. Thank you.
Mr. Chambers, let me just say on behalf of the citizens of this community that don't even have an inkling of just how much you do as a group, y'all's fingerprints are all over this community. You help and you give selflessly without expecting any note of writing or anything in return. So I'm especially pleased that Pops Barnes, Counselor Barnes, did bring this forward. It's a great group. They do an awful lot around this community. All right, we also, very sad that we're not going to be able to have our Veterans Day Parade this year. That's another casualty of the pandemic. But there's so many people that jumped when Counselor Barnes asks them to, to try to put that together. And he wanted to at least do a resolution recognizing those individuals. And before, if you don't hit your lights, sir, before I turn it over to him, I just want to acknowledge that Counselor Barnes decided that a city our size needs to do more for, in the way of outward recognition of our veterans. They're such a critical, critical part of our community. And so I just want to congratulate Counselor Barnes. He probably won't have his name as prominent in this resolution as it needs to be, but he has, he's done an amazing job in allowing us and reminding us to recognize our veterans. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I made a mistake, Mayor. Last time, I think I told you that this would have been this coming Saturday, the 11th. I didn't have my shoes untied. Take my shoe off. It's actually, this Saturday would have been the 12th. And first of all, what I want to do is to, I want to wish my fellow counselors here who are veterans, Counselor Toya Tucker, Counselor Mimi Woodson, and Counselor John House, and all of my fellow veterans, an enjoyable and peaceful Veterans Day tomorrow. Considering the safety of our citizens, we decided not to have a Veterans Day Parade this Saturday. And I thought it appropriate and asked that council do a resolution expressing not only my personal joy that many members in this community have made this Veterans Day Parade such a stalwart in this community. All the support personnel who make this possible, all of the veteran organizations that year after year take their time to support. The citizens of the tri-community, Phoenix City, Columbus, Fort Benning, this marvelous tri-community that come out year after year in support of veterans. I can't tell you just how much I appreciate how this Veterans Day Parade has evolved. And you know, one of the things that I think about is I think about all the veterans that gave their life in support of the precious freedoms that we all enjoy here. And I think also about, and I'm really happy for all of the veterans, but each Veterans Day Parade, I especially have a great measure of gratitude for the heroes of the Vietnam War who were never really given the hero's welcome that they should have given. And my heart feels good when I'm riding the parade and I see, because each year, each year, my goal is that it makes up for the years that they were deprived of the recognition. And just to be honest with you, every veteran, the only thing we ask for when we render our service is for God and country, not for anything else. But it is so good when a community as dynamic as this community is, comes out in support and says, thank you, veterans. And so I ask council for a resolution to express not only my appreciation, but this government's appreciation for the support of the Veterans Day Parade that gets bigger and bigger, all the children with the placards, veterans, we love you. And that's very important. President Ronald Reagan said, we are only one generation away from missing out on the precious freedoms that we have. And it's only done because of the posterity, little children who see and realize what it takes to keep us the land of the free and the home of the brave. No other country in the face of this earth has the rights that we have. But it doesn't come free. It doesn't come free. It comes with sacrifice. And I just want to say, Columbus community, Phoenix City, Fort Benning, thank you so much for your support. All the military organizations who are here to get a resolution, I can't thank you enough. The ROTC, the Light Brigade, and the support personnel, Holly Browder, Columbus Parks and Recs, Phoenix City Parks and Recs, the staff, Brad Strickland, for all the support, the television and radio personality Wesley Viesley, AKA, by the way, DJ Chip, and Miller Robson, for your support. And so the resolution reads thusly, whereas a veteran of military service is someone who has served in one of the branches of the United States Armed Forces, and whereas throughout the history of this great country, veterans by their services help maintain the precious freedoms we all enjoy. And whereas honorable military service is one of the highest contributions anyone can make to our country. And whereas the Chattahoochee Valley is fortunate to have a large veteran population. And whereas the citizens of the Chattahoochee Valley greatly appreciate the service our veterans rendered. And whereas City Councilor Jerry Pops Barnes conceived the idea to have an annual Veterans Day Parade to be held on the second Saturday in November to honor the women and men who wear or who have worn honorably the uniform of one of our armed forces. And whereas the first annual Veterans Day Parade was held on November the 14th, 2009. And whereas all the veterans of the Chattahoochee Valley are worthy to be recognized for their service. And whereas this resolution is to honor the citizens of the Columbus, Phoenix City, and Fort Benning communities for their sustained support of the annual Veterans Day Parade, the many military organizations for their support, as well as the JROTC units, marching school bands, and support personnel for making the annual Veterans Day Parade an annual success. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby express our deep appreciation to the following, and please the organizations and individuals, when I call your name or whatever, if you can stand, I appreciate it. American Legion Posts 267, 135, 333, and 35. Their auxiliaries and their auxiliaries of all the military organizations. The Blind Veterans Association, the Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Organization, the Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Council, Buffalo Soldiers Motorcycle Club, the Charles and Greveview AmVets Post 9, Columbus Antique Militia Organization, the Disabled American Veterans Muskogee Chapter Number 7, the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 56, From One Veteran to Another, Inc., the Global Association of Buffalo Soldiers, Vietnam Veterans 101st Airborne Division, Wounded Warrior Project, American Legion Riders, World War II Veterans, Manchester Veterans Committee, American Legion Third District, Coeida Falls Chapter Sons of the American Revolution, Marine Corps League Detachment 1402, Military Jeepers, Inc. of Fort Benning, 82nd Airborne Association, Miss Johnny Melillo Claussen and Rosie the Riveter Association, National Infantry Museum, Southeastern Vet to Vet Peer Support, 75th Ranger Regiment, Tri-City Veterans, Triple Nickel Military Association, Veterans of Foreign War Post 5180, Colonel Robert Net, Veterans of Foreign War Post 12110, Veterans of Foreign War Post 3228, Veterans of Foreign War Post 665, Vietnam Veterans of America, World War Wide Army Veterans, Marching JROTC Cadets and School Marching Bands, Lieutenant Colonel Roger Barrows, the Lighthouse Brigade Headquarters and Instructor Cadre, and the JROTC Cadets of Carver High School, Central High School, of Tarleton County School System, Columbus High School, Hardaway High School, Jordan High School, Kendrick High School, Northside High School, Russell County High School, Shore High School, Spencer High School, Columbus State University, Fort Benning Maneuver Center of Excellence Marching Band, and the Fort Valley State Marching Bands. Again, the great citizens, patriotic citizens of Phoenix City, Columbus, who come out each year to support the parade. Now, support personnel, these are the individuals that we start in August, late August, to prepare for the Veterans Day Parade. These individuals are the backbone. These are the ones who work, call the train to make sure it's not going to run, put out the chairs, the flags, and the medians, all the decorations, contact public safety. These are the ones that work hard from August, late August, we get together until, actually, right up until the parade, 6:00 in the morning, to include the television and radio personalities, DJ Chip setting up all their equipment and whatever, and Miller Robson. These individuals do so much to make the parade a success. Holly Browder, Columbus Parks and Recs, Phoenix City Parks and Recs, Brad Strickland, retired director, Miss Rebecca Harris, all of these individuals. I appreciate all that you've done, and this council appreciates all that you've done, to honor our veterans who secure our freedoms. And let us not forget, all of us veterans know and have experienced the women and men who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. If we could stand up for a minute and give honor to them, I Thank you. And I move for its adoption.
All right, it's seconded by Counselor Woodson. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. It is passed unanimously. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell my colleague Counselor Jerry Pops Barnes, which I never call him by his full name, is that thank you. Thank you for your vision. Thank you for your service. Thank you for all you do in our community. You might not hear it often enough, but how special you are in the lives of a lot of citizens and a lot of veterans here in Columbus. I personally can say that with your friendship, I've been able to accomplish- I've been able to accomplish some things for my loving mom that I wouldn't have if it wasn't for you as being a nurse. And as a fellow veteran, thank you for fighting for our rights. Thank you for bringing this parade to our community. From the bottom of my heart, the people of District 7, all the veterans that I know throughout the United States and Puerto Rico, we say to you, "Thank you. Job well done."
Counselor Tucker?
Counselor Barnes, that was so emotional. I am almost in tears. Thank you so much. As a veteran, that means more than I can even describe. Because when we take that oath of office, we have no idea what we're entering. We don't. And we come back with wounds that people don't see. So, thank you. And I thank all the veterans in the tri-city area. So, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Barnes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add my special thanks to Counselor Barnes for his leadership in this city on a variety of issues, and especially for the Veterans Day Parade. Because without a doubt, it would not have happened without Counselor Barnes making it happen. And so, I appreciate that, and all veterans appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor Barnes gave, because of that parade, I had one of the coolest things that I've ever been able to do. Had my eighty, at the time, eighty-six-year-old father rode. He's a veteran of the United States Army. And he had an opportunity to ride in that parade, as he and I rode in it together.
Even though you were the mayor, the star of that day that was riding in that truck was your father.
Yeah. He's, trust me, he's still the star of the show. I promise you. But thank you for your commitment to your community and to the veterans that live here. All right. Next up, we've got a presentation, and this is Dr. List with the Columbus Memory Center. And I want to thank Dr. List for his tireless efforts to improve his community by helping the citizens. And they've got a program that they wanted to talk about today, and I think it's outstanding. I think particularly during this year, we could use a program like this. So, Dr. List?
Mayor, thank you so much. City Council, thank you as well. I do want to share some, an exciting program that we hope that you will partner with us. But before I do so, I want to thank you for what you've done in the past. The Columbus Memory Center has spent a number of years trying to improve the health of the community, and at the same time, making the citizens very proud of what we've done. And it's a partnership that the Columbus City Council and the mayor's office has always done with so many different organizations in the city that allowed this to occur. When I moved with my family here in 1995, one of the reasons why I chose Columbus, Georgia, is you could see this public-private partnership that made this city shine, really a jewel of Georgia, as far as I'm concerned. And under the leadership, your leadership and the mayor's leadership, it just continues to shine brighter and brighter. So, I want to thank you for that on behalf of my family, and behalf of the Columbus Memory Center. Many of you may know that about four years ago, we joined in a partnership, the City Council, the mayor's office, Columbus Memory Center, and the Alzheimer's Association, in what was called the Columbus Memory Project, and it's still called the Columbus Memory Project. Through that, we have offered and proceeded with thousands and thousands of free cognitive tests for anybody that wants to walk into our office. There is no doctor, there's no appointment, and there's no obligation, and there's no cost. And so, with that, we've provided a great service, I think, to the community. We have detected certainly some early dementias that have helped people recognize that they have issues that need to be dealt with. We have been able to direct families to appropriate resources that they otherwise would not have been able to access or didn't know that they needed. And then, equally important, we have given thousands of people comfort to know that they are actually okay. Because the worried well is a major problem. You know, as seniors, people sit around a table, and they talk about many great things, but they also have many worries. And one of those great worries is whether or not they're on the verge of a dementing illness such as Alzheimer's disease. And by taking a memory number every year, that's what we call the cognitive test, the memory number, that they can be reassured that they're okay, and then they can smile for another year. And equally important to that is that we have uncovered thousands of people who are not at the top of their game. They are thinking less well than they could with entirely correctable ideologies, things such as medication side effects, and depression, and anxiety, and pain syndromes. And so, it's been a great help. And it's through that last area that it's allowed me to recognize the importance of getting better mental health to allow people to think better. And that's what I wanted to speak to you today, what we call Columbus Laughs. So, for centuries, frankly, people in the world have practiced what we call laugh therapy. And in the last many decades, let's say forty or fifty years, it's been a practice of many governments and offices around the world. In particular, I learned about this through some news programs in India, where it turns out that many police departments, before they go on patrol, go into the parking lot, and as a group, they practice laugh exercises. There's no jokes. Nobody's telling a joke. They don't have to have a funny person there. It's just the physical function of smiling, of laughing, getting the deep ha-ha-has and the high he-he-he's with the belief, and now the scientific proof, that it actually makes a person feel better. And therefore, if they feel better, likely to have better relationships. Okay, thank you. Likely have better relationships with the community as a whole. So, you can imagine if a person is in a better mood, they're more likely to have better family relationships, they're more likely to have better work relationships, they're more likely to succeed in the world. And so, what we would like to do in partnership, again, with the Columbus Council, the mayor's office, and the Alzheimer's Association, is bring Columbus Laughs to this entire community, and again, set an example for the entire world. It's a very easy process. What we will be doing is creating a series of laugh videos. We would hope that we would have a kickoff event that the Columbus Council would participate in, either simply by support or even maybe on Zoom with us. And we will go through laughing exercises that will then be available to anybody at any time that they want to access it, because it will be on the web, and so they can do this. What's so amazing about this kind of therapy, you could be a believer or not believer before you start this, but at the end, you'll have almost no choice but to believe. Because what we say at the beginning of laugh therapy is, say, "Take a sense of who you are right now. Where do you feel? Are you happy or not happy? Are you exuberant or very sad? Do you feel a little bit of pain? You know, where are you in your life?" And then go through essentially what is five minutes of simple exercises using our laughing muscles. And we say, again, "How do you feel after those five minutes?" And what almost everybody says is, "It makes a difference." And that's why this is practiced in many countries around the world, but has not been popularized in the United States. We would like Columbus, Georgia, to be the focus of popularizing this in the United States, having an option for, frankly, free mental care without any harm coming. Interestingly, because of the pandemic, we have the issue of harm of breathing out loud, breathing strongly, laughing out loud. Never really thought, when we initially were starting this project, that we could cause any harm by laughter. So, we will be encouraging this to be happening at home. And if it's out in public with socially spaced distancing, with masks and things of that nature. But the reality is, other than that fraction of risk in that regard, there is no downside to trying laughter. And if it doesn't work for an individual, they don't do it the next time. But most people will likely feel dramatically better and take great pride in this. I do want to mention that when we did the launch of the Columbus Memory Project, that Columbus, Georgia, became famous around the world. That we were the banner headline in WebMD for an entire week. We were in news programs all over the country and a few newspapers around the world. And I now sit on a number of international boards for the direction of memory care, memory research, for global education. We have a lot of changes coming to the issue of Alzheimer's disease and dementia as a whole. We are, Columbus, Georgia, was chosen as one of the premier sites to start the most important prevention research in the history of Alzheimer's disease. So, we're doing that now. We have research trials for every phase of this illness. Our competition, just so you're aware, is Mayo Clinic, Johns Hopkins, Emory University, UAB. So, we have the opportunity to bring world-class research to citizens that otherwise wouldn't get it. And in large part, it's because of this partnership between City Council, the mayor's office, the Alzheimer's Association, and the Columbus Memory Center. So, we want to thank you. We hope that you'll endorse this project. We hope that you'll participate in this project. I will tell you, I've already done the videos so that they can be posted. We plan to launch, really, not until maybe late February or early March, just because we don't think there's any air left in the room to do anything. But when we do, you'll see videos of me, and I look a little foolish. I got to tell you, it's not easy to go on and just start laughing when there's nothing to laugh at. So, you're welcome to participate. You're welcome to do it silently. You're welcome to do it in the back rooms. But I promise you this, if you actually try laugh therapy yourselves and with your families, you'll be glad you did. It is not hocus pocus. It's high science. And I'll just mention to you that in the course of our journey for this, that I worked with a group of school principals attempting to get their PhDs. And when we talked about this, I was taking them through a tour of the brain, that one of them, Dr. Deborah Nagy, she wasn't a doctor then, but decided that she wanted to get her PhD in laugh therapy. And by gosh, she actually did. So, it's a strong science. It's not just a holistic method. It's holistic method with proven scientific benefit. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Counselor Woodson?
Thank you very much, Dr. List, for being here. I appreciate it. I'm a caregiver of an Alzheimer's patient. My mom has it, and she has gone to where there's no movements, and she cannot eat solid foods. So, this is dear to my heart for that reason and other people that I know of. I'd like to know is, when is that Zoom meeting? And how can we be a part of the laughing program? Because I would love to. I need some laughter.
Did the podium microphone go off? Hit it again. Okay.
Okay. If you can provide the information for us, it'd be appreciated, because I'm pretty sure there are many other people watching that would like the information so that they can also participate.
Well, Counselors, thank you so much for that question and opportunity. I do want to say that when that microphone went off, that my wife texted me and wanted to know how she could get one of these for home. So, thank you. We haven't listed the day yet. It would be likely very late February or early March. Again, just so that we can have a climate where people might pay attention to us. It will be a Zoom launch, and we will be taking up advertising. The Columbus Memory Center is going to foot the bill for all of this. There's no taxpayer money in this. We will spend quite a bit of money on advertising, let the city know that it's coming. We will certainly keep, as our partners, I'm hoping you'll be our partners, the City Council and the mayor's office, fully informed of everything that we do. We would like, in the end of this, for you guys to take pride in what you've done, just as I hope you've taken pride in the Columbus Memory Project. So, our intention is to make this another bright star for Columbus. And I thank you. And I just wanted to speak to you about your mother. I know how hard these things are. And because this is such a common illness, that there's almost nobody that is not touched by this illness in one way or the other. So, you're not alone. My family's been riddled with the disease. I do want you to know that hope is just around the corner. There's a potential for a drug to be approved early next year that can slow the disease down in its early stages by twenty to forty percent. We have about a dozen research trials going on right now, including prevention trials. So, the knowledge base has just exponentially grown. You're going to see, over the next number of years, this disease become a manageable illness and maybe even a preventable one.
Well, I hope so, because I hope I don't get it myself. I have too many precious memories. Thank you very much. And I tend to agree with you. You don't, I don't feel alone, but it's a disease that, it's very hard because it's a disease where you watch your loved ones die before your eyes, and there's nothing you can do. And with the pandemic that's going on now, it's even harder because if your family members are in an institution, you can't touch them. They can't feel you. They can't feel your care for them. So, this is very dear to me. I've been busy for a long time, but time is getting available to me where I like to work a little bit more closely, mainly talking to people to encourage them, because it's very difficult. To be honest, I kept it a secret for a long time. I was going in a bad route, and thanks to Counselor Pop Barnes, he noticed it. And he stayed on me, and stayed on me, because I'm very private. He stayed on me constantly, constantly, day and night, until I finally opened to him, and he was the one that guided me to the resources that I needed for my mother and myself. So, this is very dear to me, and as time frees up in my life, you'll see me more active, because I know the pain. I know the feeling, and it's something that you just cannot control. And thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart and the bottom of my mind. Thank you for the future of tomorrow for other people.
You're so very kind. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that Councilman Barnes is somebody that we've tried to get to direct our center since the very beginning, because he seems to be everywhere and knows everybody. So, he is a far-sighted person with great energy, and I just share all the accolades that everybody else has shared with Councilman Barnes.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. List for his service to the city and service to the House family. We very much appreciate all that you and your staff have done and will continue to do. And to add an endorsement for laugh therapy, having tried an initial version of it, I think it's a good, I think it's a good therapy. It's a good approach. And so, I encourage people to get involved if they can.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. But really, from the bottom of my heart, my family and my business, thanks, Columbus. This has been an amazing city and an amazing place to raise a family and have a business.
Counselor Barnes?
Dr. List, just give me a call. What you're doing is on the cutting edge. I talked to a friend of mine. I went to school with at the University of Pennsylvania. They're very much aware of what you're doing. And so, we are here in Columbus, Georgia. You're on the cutting edge of some really phenomenal things in this field here. So, we've been, I've been calling you. I've left messages. I told, I asked the young man there. I was a patient of yours. I don't know if you remember, when I was in uniform. And so, I know just how on the cutting edge you are when it comes to neurology. But there's a disconnect. If you will call me, 706-442-0249, you call me, we can connect.
You can't keep me away, Congressman Barnes. Thank you so much.
Well, Dr. List, we thank you so much for the good work you're doing in Columbus and the way you continue to look to kind of pioneer new paths. And it's helping the families of this community. It's making Columbus a better place to live.
Mayor, thank you so very much, and thank you, City Council. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. And we're going to pull up a couple of items, but Counselor Barnes has asked. I don't know how I missed them. I've got about 4,000 copies of the resolution. And so, what I'm going to do is, the folks who are here representing some of the organizations that Counselor Barnes mentioned, I'm going to put these up there, and we'll let them come pick them up. Is that suitable, sir?
Counselor Huff?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to bring to your attention and the council and the public the Sports Council. Don't know if you saw where they were awarded. The great prize. The Sports Events and Tourism Association awarded our Columbus Sports Council with, they call it the Sports ETA 2019 Sports Commission of the Year, Population Under 500,000 Award. A little bit about it was, they were put in the hat with a lot of other organizations across the country. As a winner, they came in with the economic impact of over $16 million for 2019, engaging forty-five, over 45,000 participants and 171,000 spectators. So, I would like to request proclamation at our next meeting and to get word out to them and get them here. Mary Sherman, David Boyd, and the group over there.
Yes, sir. They're already scheduled to appear, and we've already got the proclamation.
Good deal.
We're ready to go.
All right, thanks.
But you're right. That was quite an accomplishment. We've had a lot of good news coming up lately. I think that we received a notification that the Columbus River Walk was voted by citizens as the, and I'll let the city manager touch on it, but one of the top projects in the country.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It was the People's Choice Award that the River Walk. And we are obviously proud of that. Just learned about it, I did, on yesterday. So, we're really proud about that. But the American- But the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials announced that the Columbus River Walk won the People's Choice Award, and you'll be hearing more about that. And so we're excited about it. We, our River Walk is about 22 miles long, and it is something for citizens to be proud about. So, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members, you'll be hearing more about that award.
And Mr. City Manager, if I may, I had a chance to vote on that, so I'm glad to know we won.
Well, great, great.
And I believe we're going to pull up.
Yes, sir.
Because some individuals are here, they're going to have to leave. Items one and two on the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one and, and two are things that need to happen to allow us to move forward with the Casita Road I-185 interchange. That interchange at that location will open up that area and will be a game changer for that area and for Columbus, Georgia. And so number one has to happen before we can do, make number two and move forward with Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church.
There's been a motion made to approve item one from Counselor Woodson.
Okay.
Is there a second? Counselor Tucker seconded it. All in, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, that is approved, Mr. City Manager.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe Reverend David Stallion is here from Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and some of the members of Mount Pilgrim, I'd ask that they stand and even come forward, Reverend Stallion, because this has been something that we have been working on for some time now, and I think that we are finally at a point that we can prepare to move forward to make this Casita Road I-185 interchange happen. And I've had conversations with each one of you, Mayor and Council, but I am asking approval this morning to enter into an agreement with Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church for the exchange of city property, and that will be the four acres of property that we would do the property swap with the Housing Authority on. But, but to exchange city property with the church as needed for the construction of this interchange at I-185 and Old Casita Road. In addition to.
There's a motion to approve, I believe that was Counselor Huff, and seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do want to get this into the record, so I will say that in addition to the exchange of property, that 4.1 acres, the initial offer of $2 million by Georgia Department of Transportation for this project will be honored by the city with those funds coming from the $58 million in TIA dollars from the state. The church made a request for consideration of the city waiving building permit fees of approximately $15,000, and to help them with removal and disposal of trees on the property, and assistance with the water and sewer tap fees from the Columbus Water Works of $3,000. So we're looking at $2 million, we're looking at the 4.1 acres, it's valued at 400,000. We will clear that property before we make the property transfer. We are looking at waiving the $15,000 in building permit fees, give or take whatever, 15, it could be 18,000, but we believe it's to be about 15,000. And then working with them on the sewer and water tap fees for the Columbus Water Work, give or take about $3,000. And with your vote today, and with us moving forward, with finalizing with the church and with Georgia DOT, Georgia DOT will have to send us the $2 million, and then we will make, package it all, and then we would look forward to closing with the church, Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, Old Casita Road, that we can then prepare to move forward with this interchange at I-185 and Old Casita Road. Reverend Stallion and members of Mount Pilgrim, the vote has been taken. You're welcome to make any comment, but you don't have to.
Mayor Henderson and City Manager Hugh Lee, and to the council, behalf of the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and the ongoing efforts to make sure that this TIA project goes through, we just want to say thanks, and we appreciate the opportunity to be a, an assistance to this community and to this city. Thank you.
And Reverend Stallion, I would just say, thank you and your congregation for, without your willingness to help us provide that greater access to an area that we think is going to benefit not only your church, but that entire, that, that entire neighborhood. It couldn't have happened without you and your church being so civic and community-minded to help us work through some of those issues. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodson had a comment.
Reverend Stallion, to you, and Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, to our city employees, who, Rick Jones and Deputy City Manager's Office, I say, House Office, to all those that went to the table to look at a vision, to find a happy compromise so that we can take the city to the next level. I say to you, thank you. God bless you, your congregation, and all the great people that went to the table that made this happen for that area. That's an area that we've been working on for a long time, and finally, it's seeing the sunshine and the blessings that it deserves. And once again, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff.
Pastor Stallion, good morning. Good morning. I'd like to thank you and your deacons and the staff there, the city manager, deputy city managers, both of them, planning, and everyone else with the city that had a part in this. Being the, what I consider myself, quote, nervous counselor in the room, it's been a long ride. It was necessary, that we needed that, as the city manager stated, that we will open up that area for economic development and will change the look. But thanks to the city manager and staff, we had a chance to work with you all and work out something so that the members of the church will not have a long ride to church. They'll still be in the area. So we are thankful and appreciative. I can rest a little better at night. I can come by and have church with you, and we can talk about some other things. Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate all the negotiations, our state representatives, the TIA group, Georgia Department of Transportation, everyone that worked with us. I thank everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, with this, at this time, I, I just want to put on the monitors a, what that interchange would look like, if we could stretch it out a little bit, maybe, but this would be I-185 at Old Casita Road, and I'd ask Director Jones to point to how this all flows, just quickly.
Good morning. What you have in front of you today is the actual design for the proposed interchange at Casita, Old Casita 185. You can see the gray area there, large gray area, that is 185 itself. And then, of course, the road that cut, that bisects that going east to west is, is Old Casita, where it ties back down to Casita with a roundabout. Right exactly, well, we can back up one more sec here. The road to the northeast, or to the north there, that curves, is actually Far Road where it will be realigned, away from the interchange itself, so provide for better flow of traffic. And then there will actually be a roundabout at that point. But the key, the key factor here for all this, of course, is dealing with, with the church itself. Here we go. This is, where the arrow is pointing is, is where Mount Pilgrim is situated today, from that standpoint there. Excuse me. And you can see the off-ramp that's going northbound there is really going to bisect or dissect their property, and the need for them to actually move. Without their cooperation, without their help, without their assistance, this project goes nowhere, and nowhere fast. And we, we really do appreciate that and commend them for working with us to make this project a reality. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you want to show where they, where they're actually going to go, and here we have that map to show.
Well, you can, quickly.
Yes, sir. If I can get this thing to move. This is, you can see up here to the north, this is 375 Far Road. This is where they are located, at 4,400 Old Casita Road, which is right there now where the interchange will be. They are about a mile away now, in terms of their, their proposed new location, in terms of all that. So they are still staying pretty much well within the area that they serve today, and I, again, we're appreciative of them working with us to make this project a reality.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to finally, again, thank Reverend David Stallion for his leadership, and the officers and members of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church for working with us, that we can do this game changer of an interchange that's going to open up that area for economic development opportunities, and there's already been tremendous investments out there, like the 56, $60 million Spencer, New Spencer High School, there's talk about a sportsplex in that area, and just so many other great things going on. So thank you to Reverend Stallion and the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church. And that's, that's all we have on that subject.
All right, thank you, Counselor Huff.
One last comment. For the public to know that this has been going on with the city manager and the Georgia, GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, I think for a little over five or six years now. And I want to let the public know that Reverend Stallion, Pastor Stallion, walked into this. We had started negotiating with the deacons and the past pastor before he arrived. I thank you for your patience. He came in to get his arms wrapped around it, and it's been a lot of work, and he made mention many, many times that it took a lot of the work, a lot of prayer, and a lot of listening to his membership. And again, thank you for the city manager, deputy city managers, and everyone for allowing Mount Pilgrim to use this facility, because they did everything in the right order. They had a church meeting here, and the church was, was all behind it. So he gave his parishioners a chance to hear and participate. So everyone's happy, and I'm happy. City manager has been right there all the way, so thank you so very much, and we'll talk soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move to the city attorney's agenda now. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item up, we've got a zoning hearing. This is continued from the prior meeting. Point 81 acres of land at 1710th Avenue. It's a split recommendation, denial from the Planning Advisory Commission because it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. Planning Department recommends conditional approval based on compatibility with existing land use. Applicant is Mr. Rob McKenna. We'll let him come up first. He's there, and then we'll hear from Mr. Austin Gower and others that may be opposed. Mr. McKenna?
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. As City Manager, or City Attorney mentioned, this thing has been delayed from the October meeting, so I think we've gone over a good bit of it, but just to kind of recap everything, this is the Sanovus Bank Building, which is on the corner of 17th and 10th Avenue. My client, Amazing Development Partners, is looking to acquire this property and rezone it to GC. It is currently RO. They intend to put a convenience store and a gas station there. We've worked with planning to come up with the conditions for this rezoning. We've agreed to build a fence along the eastern property line, which abuts the neighborhood, and to put in a 20-foot planted buffer with evergreen trees, which will help buffer that area again even further. As we discussed last month, this property is in between two pieces of GC right now. The property immediately north of our property is currently GC. Property immediately south is GC. Property across the street to the southeast is, or southwest, is also GC. So there's really no reason, legal reason, why this property should not be rezoned. My client is a fuel supplier. They own probably 70 or more convenience store gas stations in the state of Georgia, so they intend to own and operate this. They do intend to have security cameras inside and outside. They have offered to have that connected to the police department, so that if there's a need for police presence there, the police can check those, those videos to make sure that what the threat is real and what the threat actually is, if there is one. They don't believe that it's necessary that they hire any security at this point, and I know that issue came up in discussions with some of you, but they are willing to hire off-duty police officers if that situation arises, that they feel like they need to have that going forward. Also, there was, there's a letter that went out about 24-hour gas station. I mentioned last time, they have agreed to close at midnight every night, so it's not going to be a 24-hour gas station. They're going to put in the state-of-the-art lights in the, in the gas islands, so that it prevents the light from leaving the site as much as possible. But I would like to take this opportunity to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McKenna, thank you very much for coming to council and, and for your client's interest in, in my district, in that area. Unfortunately, I am against this rezoning, and my reason for it is, and I understand that there's property on the side and a property on the other side that's zoned for GC. I understand that, but the problem that the people in that community and myself are having is that it's going to be a gas station. There's going to, in the future, can be environment problems. You're talking about placing gas tanks underneath the ground near homes. So, and our concern also is with the gas stations, the elements that it can attract. I understand all the criteria that you put through, but I am the voice of the people in my district, and the community is against it. They don't feel that they will be safe, and just like every other business, we get lots of promises, but at the end of the day, they're not completed. I personally feel that I wouldn't want to live right next to a gas station, being there, and I'm pretty sure if it was near your home or, or his home, they would be also having some concerns in reference to that. I've always supported you in, in, in all the years that I've been here, but this is one rezoning that I am against. I am for the people and representing the people today. Thank you. And there will be some citizens coming up to discuss the opposition to, so I'm not going to be long-winded. I just want you to know that I'm opposed to this today.
I understand.
Thank you.
I would like to point out that the two properties that we discussed, that are GC, could currently, current, right now, be used as a gas station. So.
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that, and, and there's nothing we can do that. It's just when a property is already rezoned, even if we're against it, we can't do anything about it. But this property isn't, and this property can, can be used in another, more complementary to that community. You know, this community went as far as creating a flyer, with just my name, my address, my phone number, everything to it. They asked me to come, and when I came, three or four of the residents came outside quickly, saying to me, please, please, don't do this to us. We're just starting to get our neighborhood growing, where, you know, most of us are all homeowners, look, look at. And there was a gentleman on top of the roof fixing his roof, and they were begging, they were begging. They said, our community has gone through such a hard time, and finally, we're getting on our feet. Finally, people are listening. We're getting more and more homeowners. So what can I say to you? If I have to look at someone that has an investment, they're going to make money, they're going to go home, versus people that live there that have to experience whatever elements come from this facility there, I have to go with the people. And I hope that as much as I respect you, you can respect my opinion. And I hope that as much as I respect you, you can respect my opinion at this. I want to be able to look at myself in the morning and say, "Hey, I fought for them even if we win or lose, but at least I know I fought because I understood their cry."
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions I can answer?
Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Gower, Austin Gower, you want to come up first? Give them your name and address, please, sir, and your position.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. My name is Austin Gower and we own the property right next door, which is the old Wells Fargo building. The address is one thousand eighteenth Street. This is an attempt to sell beer, cigarettes, and lottery tickets next door to an emergency room in a residential neighborhood. I slept last night, thought about it, and I tried to think about another situation where beer, cigarettes, and lottery tickets are sold that close to a residential neighborhood in Columbus, Georgia. There may be a circumstance, but I'm not aware of it. And so, I would just like to ask you all to deny this rezoning and to speak to the opposition and say that we are general commercial and we could do this on our property. They're probably right, but we're not trying to do that. And if you all want to place a restriction, then I'm not going to sell beer, cigarettes, or lottery tickets on my general commercial property. I'm willing to accept that today. So, I would just ask for you all to decline this and I would tell you all to do the right thing for the right reasons. And you don't need any political cover here for this, but if you do, you've got unanimous decision from PAC denying it. You've got residents denying it. You've got Midtown, the group has said they're opposed to it. And you've got Emergency Room right across the street, so you've got plenty of cover to deny. Thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else? Just raise your hand if you want to come on up.
Hit your button.
We had a, Counselor Davis wanted to ask Mr. Gower, I think, a question.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gower, thank you for coming up, but you mentioned something about that you'd be willing to, I guess for lack of a better term, limit your property in use as well, which, you know, when I view this request, actually, your property weighs heavy on this request in my mind because your property is general commercial.
Yes, sir.
It would be different if they weren't, you know, and I'm sitting here thinking that if this request is denied, what stops the adjacent business owner from doing the same thing? And really, the answer to that is nothing. Both properties are the same. They're virtually identical. I guess my question to you would be this morning, would you be willing to, I think the concern, if the concern's with the neighborhood and keeping a somewhat of a character in development, which I think what's being said is more along the lines of residential office, would you be willing to rezone your property to residential office?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? I'm sorry for skipping out early on that question.
Thank you, Mr. Gower.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Jensen, you want to come up? I see a hand in the back also.
Thank you. My name is Betty Sue Aiken and I live a lot in a house from where this will be located. I have been a resident there in that house for sixty-plus years.
Ma'am, please forgive me for interrupting you, but we want to make sure we hear everything you have to say. And frankly, right now, up here, we're having a hard time hearing because of the sound system, I think. It's not you, I think it's just the microphone is a little muffled coming back this way. I wonder if we can bend that podium mic down. I'm so sorry for the inconvenience. Thank you.
That's okay. I'm blessed, okay, thank you. I'm blessed to be here. I'm eighty-five years old and I have lived in this house for sixty-plus years. I've lived in the same neighborhood in a three-block radius all my life. And my community means the world to me. I have active member of Columbus Against Drugs in our neighborhood as long as I was able to go. And I appreciate it, but I am strictly against this because of the fact that our neighborhood will falter. And I love to sit on my front porch. I have a porch all the way across the front of my house. And I can't sit out there if there's something going on down in the neighborhood. And we have been fortunate to be in the community that we are in. And I just hope that the council will deny this request.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so another hand toward the back. You want to come on up, sir? Give them your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Julio Portillo. I'm one-two-three-six Wildwood Avenue, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-oh-six. I'm the executive director of Midtown Inc. I believe you have all received a letter on our behalf. I don't know if you'd like for me to read that letter to you all today? No? Okay. Well, if you all have received the letter, I just want to echo the words of Mr. Austin Gower. We do not support the rezoning of this property. This has not been an easy decision for our board as we analyze pros and cons of what this would do to the area. Our biggest concern, like Councilwoman Woodson said, is the impact on the neighborhoods. It's the encroachment on the neighborhoods. When our neighbors come to us and speak out with their concerns, especially when we have first-time homebuyers and tenants there, we worry about the impact that this could have. We worry about tenants leaving those properties or homeowners leaving those properties and adding to the blight that we are so hard trying to fight all around town, including Midtown. So, I just wanted to express on behalf of our board of directors and our staff, our opposition to the rezoning of this property. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Portillo. Anybody else want to be heard on this zoning for or against? Raise your hand. All right, Mayor, that looks like all the hands. We will bring this back next week's meeting, nine o'clock AM, for a vote at that time.
Counselor Woodson?
I just want to, I just want to say to my colleagues and to the developer, I'm not against development. I think some great suggestions were made by Counselor Davis today. But I just want my colleagues to hear, hear the cry of the citizens in that community. There is a lot of elderly and a lot of people that are fighting to bring that community back to life, to get rid of the blight. There are a lot of people buying the property, helping, giving a helping hand to this community so this community can become the community at once, once. As you heard, one of the residents, you know, they lived there over sixty years. What does that tell you? How special that community is. And like in all communities, it has a time where it goes up and down. But I want you to please think about it and think, can you look at yourself in the mirror when you wake up knowing that you destroyed someone's neighborhood? And that's probably not the good word to use, I'm sorry. How you have impacted someone's livelihood in their neighborhood, one that they have all the passion in the world, put all their sweat and tears, worked very hard, two and three jobs to bring it to where it is and where it's going tomorrow. So, I ask you, just think about it by the time we next vote and just vote your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I would like to ask the director of Midtown to come back up. I do have a question, but...
Mr. Portillo?
I would like to ask him.
Mr. Portillo, you talked about the character of the neighborhood and certainly, Midtown has done a lot of good things in preserving and making sure that neighborhoods are quality, livable, work, live, and play-type communities. I would like to ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Gowers, but in a different form, being that there's residential property in the area that's been zoned general commercial. Would your organization work to try to assist and to help those folks to get their properties more in line with neighborhood, commercial, residential as it should be?
Yes, and that's one of the things that we try very hard to do and we welcome those people that request our help. Our doors are open for that. And Mr. McKenna did approach us. Unfortunately, by the time he figured out that that property lied within Midtown, it had been just a bit too late for that. But he took the right steps in that regard and he came to Midtown Inc. and presented to our leadership. We had an open discussion about this. So, yes, we would love to have the opportunity to work with anybody who's interested in any sort of development, whether it's commercial, residential. We would provide the assistance that we can for that.
Thank you. It doesn't appear to be any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got another hand up back here, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, sir. Come forward.
Give them your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, my name's Kenneth King. I live at ten-thirty-six Eighteenth Street, which is just right around the corner from the area they're talking about. I just heard the gentleman when he was presenting what he was going to build there. And all I could think of when he was talking about, hey, if we need to put security up, if we need to hire off-duty policemen, and I'm thinking, you know, do I, I really, I mean, I've been living there for twenty years. My family's been living there for a hundred in that house. And I'm thinking, do I want to, you know, I mean, why would you even think about putting something in a neighborhood that's that old and with that many elderly people there where you're even contemplating the idea of, do I need to hire security guards? Do I need to put security cameras up? I mean, I can't think of any neighborhood in Columbus where anybody would want to, you know, bring that in and like, hey, I want to, I think we'll hire security if we need it. We'll put extra policemen in if we need it. I mean, I don't know. Just hearing that made me want to stand up and voice my opinion.
Doesn't seem like there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, Mayor, seeing no other hands, we will declare that hearing closed and bring this back next week, nine AM for a vote. The next item is a zoning item that was continued from last meeting. Let's see, eight-forty-nine Brighton Road, Madeline Bray Boy. Anybody show up this morning on the Bray Boy petition? All right, Mayor, I suggest you let this go on to second reading next week, then the council can take up a denial of this matter at that time.
Okay.
All right, that hearing is closed. Next zoning item is two-point thirteen acres at eighteen-twenty-one Whittlesley Road. Currently residential office, proposed general commercial for office storage and it's recommended approval by Planning Advisory Commission and Planning Department. Proponent here?
Counselor Davis? Is anybody here representing the...
Yeah, I think he's coming. Applicant here, come on up, sir. Give them your name and address, please, sir.
Andy Krowcheck, twenty-eight-oh-seven Clubview Drive.
We, I just want to ask you, what's the purpose and intent of zoning the property general commercial?
Currently, there's a unit open in the front of the building and a partner and I are going to open a retail flooring store. And there's a warehouse in the back where we would store product that we, flooring that we have on hand so that contractors can come in and buy it and take it away at the same time, versus having to order it.
One of the things I would like to ask is, I would like to, as a requirement, add to this rezoning and ask you to agree that there wouldn't be any billboards erected on this property. Are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, as my father-in-law owns the property now and he basically said that there's signage restrictions based on what he currently has. The only thing that we had intended to do was put a sign on the side of the building in between the two windows on the building, but if that's going to hold everything up, I don't know if you have certain size requirements or anything, but if that holds it up, then I'm willing to concede that if necessary.
No, I think I understood what you just said. We're having a hard time. When I engage this mic here, I have a hard time understanding what's being said at the podium, but I think I heard what you said and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, no billboards, sorry. He just explained to me what you meant.
Oh, okay, it's already...
Yeah, we don't plan on having any big billboards or anything like that to advertise.
But you may have a regular sign for the business that's allowed under the code, right?
Okay. Yeah, that's one of the problems. It raised a red flag because that's one of the problems. I just want to make it known that along Whittlesley, we've had a lot of concerns, a lot of complaints, a lot of ins and outs about billboards. So, whenever there's a request for a general commercial piece of property, it leaves it open for really anything to be done, including billboard. So, you know, that's one of the reasons I ask because I've been involved in some of those battles, I guess, along Whittlesley and New Whittlesley in that area. So, that is a big concern. I'm glad that you addressed that.
Counselor Davis, do you want to make that a condition and put it in the ordinance?
I would like to put that in as a condition.
All right. Need to get a vote on that, Mayor, as an amendment. There'll be no billboards permitted on the property subject to rezoning.
All right, there's a motion to forbid billboards on the property. Is there a second? Second, Counselor Garrett. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, that'll be added as a special condition.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this? If not, we will vote with the condition added, no billboards next week at nine o'clock. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, last zoning hearing, Mayor, is a UDO text amendment. This would allow fuel stations in a heavy manufacturing zoning district and also provide that six members of the Uptown facade boards shall represent the Uptown Business District instead of association, that housekeeping change. Are there any questions around the table? Are there any questions around the table?
No, sir.
All right, we'll vote on that next week at nine o'clock. The next item is a continuation of an ordinance that amended the FY twenty-one budget. This is a classification and Superior Court Accountability Court Solicitor Victim Witness Program and Other Purposes. Is Ms. Hollowell here? I think, um, we'll probably call her up first and then hear about a proposed amendment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, um, I, our HR Director is going to come forward and talk about, um, an amendment to what you saw last week and kind of explain that. Director Hollowell.
Good morning. Um, I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I would like to go through with the council as it relates to this particular ordinance that was, um, on first reading last and was carried over again as first reading. There were several questions from council, and I wanted to make sure that we were clear on responding to those questions to, uh, hopefully allow council to move forward with this particular, uh, ordinance, the policy as well as the, um, ordinance. So, in terms of the, um, in terms of this particular, uh, internal audit that was done by our internal auditor, the Finance Director and the Human Resources Department responded to the audit, to the audit, which is, uh, how we got here today. So, one of the things is to propose amendments to a grants policy that is before you, and I believe you all have a copy of the actual grants policy, but, uh, bullet pointed before you in this first slide is the particulars of that grants policy, uh, which states in part, for the most part, as relates to, uh, employees whose positions are funded by a grant. It is proposed that all of those grants positions will be classified in the city's adopted, uh, pay plan, and that pay grades and salary ranges will be established for each positions, and that the grants are not eligible to receive additional grants supplements, these grant positions. They would not receive an additional grant supplement outside of the regular pay for that position. Uh, salary for grant employees may be increased when council approves, uh, pay adjustments for general government employees, and there's funding available in that grant for it. Uh, it also proposes that funding for grant positions may be one-to-percent grant-funded or a combination of grant funds and general fund monies. Uh, it, exceptions to this particular policy would need to be approved by the city manager in quarter, in accordance with this Columbus Code, Section two dash one eight point seven, and of course, the administration of these grants is the responsibility of that receiving department or agency. So to those questions from council members, I see that, uh, Counselor Thomas is not here today, but she, this first question came from Counselor Thomas and from Counselor Crab, and the question was, eh, eh, and I appreciate for clarification, uh, what is a grant position? And do the employees paid by grant receive benefits? And do they pay into the pension plan? So to respond to the question of what is a grant position, uh, these are city employees, because that was the question about whether these were actually city employees that we were talking about, and to respond to that question, absolutely yes, these are city employees who happen to be paid with a different funding source. And we have employees that are paid with various funding sources. These particular employees are paid with a funding source through grants that are provided through this Accountability Court program. So these are city employees, uh, in grant-paid positions, and they are classified position on our, uh, paid classification plan. These are full-time employees that we're talking about, there can, some of them could be part-time employees, but for the purpose of this particular audit and our response, these are all full-time employees. These are employees that are eligible for and do receive all city benefits, uh, just like a regular employee would receive. They receive health insurance, uh, medical, dental, and vision, they receive leave benefits, uh, including, uh, sick leave, annual leave, overtime, comp time, they are eligible for that. Uh, they receive the employer-paid portion of benefits, including life insurance, uh, they would benefit from unemployment insurance as well as workers' comp insurance, so these are city employees. Now, there is an exception here that I do want to point out, that these employees that are, have this different funding source, uh, they may or may not be in the city's pension. That was a question that was asked. Some employees that are in grant-paid positions are in the pension fund, and some are not. One of the reasons for this is sometimes an employee may start out in the general fund, and if they start out in the general fund, they're going to be in the pension plan, but that employee may move to a grant-paid position, and typically, they're going to remain in the grant. But if they were hired under that particular grant program, there's a good chance that they are not going to be in the pension plan. So that's one of the exceptions, uh, in terms of these employees that are paid specifically by this grant. Uh, they, they are considered temporary employees because, because they are being paid by a specific grant, and if the grant goes away, that typically means that the position goes away. Uh, there are, in terms of the nature of grants, and I know you all know this, that they are typically one-time allowances. You know, typically, a grant may be a year or two years, that's why they are considered temporary. Uh, they are typically designed, uh, to provide a particular service or a project or a program. These grants may be renewed, but they are not guaranteed. So hence, these employees that are paid under these grants are considered temporary employees, even though they benefit from all of the, uh, they receive all the benefits of a regular, full-time employee with very little exception, typically that exception being that they are not in the pension plan. So just to summarize, in terms of these, uh, CCG employees, uh, who receive a separate funding source that pays for their positions, they are in classified city positions, uh, they may be fully funded by a grant, or it may be a combination of a grant and general fund monies. These are typically considered temporary positions, and meaning that they are funded for as long as the grant is awarded. And so another question came from Counselor Thomas. The question was, how can an employee appeal a, the recommended policy that's being proposed if they don't agree with it? Uh, the response to that is that the policy that's being recommended, uh, complies with the city charter. Uh, and the internal auditor spoke of this in, in, in great detail la- last time we met, uh, charter, the Section two dash one eight point one, excuse me, point seven, I've got a, a misprint there. Uh, and basically, what that particular section states is that the city manager is charged with setting a salary for city employees, not the federal, not the state government, based on the fact that that's who award the grant. The appropriations, of course, uh, come from the city council that allows these salaries to be paid. And the other question was, how can, you know, to go back to Counselor Thomas's question, how can an employee appeal? And so it was stated last time, and we stated again, that any employee, after having exhausted any internal appeals, may appeal to city council their pay. So another question that was asked, uh, this was also from Counselor Thomas, the question was, if an employee whose salary is totally paid for by a grant, can all of the funding from the salaries be used to pay and employ, pay employees, which may be more than the city's value for that position or the established pay for that position? Can the city, can the employee receive more than what the value of that position is because their funding in the, uh, grant? The short answer to that question is no, uh, because there are a number of employees throughout this government and various departments that apply for and receive millions of dollars in grant money annually. However, those employees are not allowed to increase or supplement their established pay, whatever their position is, whether it's a pay, pay grade twenty, a pay grade eighteen, uh, they receive the pay for that position, although they may be applying for and receiving grants on behalf of the city, they are not allowed to supplement their existing pay. Uh, additional grant funds, if there is supplemental money in a grant, those additional grant funds may be directed toward adding programs, additional services, or they may add staff that benefits, uh, the purpose of that particular grant for which it was awarded. I will note that, uh, these grants, whatever grants we're talking about, uh, they are awarded to the City of Columbus, they are not awarded to an employee, so the employee does not have the option of increasing their supplemental pay because they are applying for the city. The grants come to the city, not the employee, and it's the employee in that agency that helps to administer that grant. Another question here that came from Counselor Crab, the question was, for an employee who writes grants, is the employee required to write a certain number of grants or a certain amount of grants so that they receive a salary? Uh, so the short answer to that is no. Employees are not required to write salaries just so, excuse me, they are not required to write grants just so they receive a salary. Uh, this, the Accountability Grant, the Accountability Court Program, uh, was established in twenty-twelve. Um, and it's stated, it's a criminal justice reform initiative, established to provide effective alternatives to sentencing for nonviolent offenders and reduce the state's prison population. That's a grant program. So, the city applied for and received the grant. It employs people to administer the grant, so the purpose is to get the grant, and we have employees that administer the grant. We are not hiring employees just so they can apply for the grant, but we have a need for and we wanted to receive this Accountability Court Program grant. So, the next question from Counselor Crab also, uh, she asked, if we already have a policy that states that the city manager sets employees' pay, why do we need this policy? Which is a good question. The policy, the grants policy that's being recommended, uh, is to reconfirm the existing ordinance that's in place that ensures that the city manager is notified when an employee is being paid, when employee's pay is being changed, and that's typical, that's standard, that the city manager would know whenever an employee's pay is being changed, and thus he either approves or disapproves. All positions, this, this policy that's being enhanced here ensures that all positions will be classified, including these grant positions, that they will be classified on our current existing UGA pay plan. Uh, also that pay grades and salary ranges will be established for each position, including those that are funded by a grant. So the next question is, why do we need to make an amendment to the existing ordinance? Because what's before you is approval of the grants policy and then the ordinance here. So the reason for the ordinance is to play the, place these grant-paid positions in UGA classified positions within that appropriate pay range for those positions. That's what's in the ordinance that's before you today. So another question from Counselor Woodson, uh, Counselor Woodson asked, when CSU reviews a position, are they placing a value on the position alone, or does it include benefits? And this question has been answered already, I think in part with a previous question, but CSU reviews a position, they analyze the position based on the skills, knowledge, and abilities needed for, for that person to perform that job, so they are not considering any associated benefits, just what's needed in order to do that particular position and place it properly in a pay grade. Uh, the city determines the benefits for employees that are offered it, the city has a benefit package, it determines those, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, these employees that are funded by a grant, a different funding source, are city employees, and they receive all the applicable benefits with very little exception, as any regular general government employees, including, uh, health insurance, uh, leave benefits, uh, paid holidays, life insurance, those sorts of things, they receive those, and, and they are not receiving them because we're having this, they, for as long as the grants have been in place, these benefits have been available to those full-time employees. So the next question, I think this was the last question here, is, is there an option for employees to be freelance grant writers? That came from Counselor Crab. The short answer for that is, well, not at this time. Uh, should the city have a need for freelance grant, grant writers, then this would typically be bidded out, uh, with our purchasing division, uh, a request for qualifications would be issued, uh, and then we would solicit for freelance grant writers, if the city believed that it had a need for those. So city employees typically, they are not freelance grant writers and employees, and what, these positions here are filled by employees, uh, that administer grants that are awarded, uh, but they are not freelance grant writers, and that, that would be all that they do is, is write grants. So, this is a handout that, uh, we talked about last time, it, it, it's a little bit more clearer now, but I, there's a specific, uh, one-pager of this particular handout here, and these are the positions that will be impacted by the ordinance that's presented to you today. So, without going over each and every one of them, I wanted to explain to you what is going on and an amendment from, to this ordinance, from the last two weeks that we had it before you, uh, which looks a little bit different, so I wanted to see if I can, without, uh, listing or going over this position by position, I wanted to say exactly what has actually happened. And I think I can best do that with these two slides here, slide number eleven and twelve. So, looking at these positions, if we look at these particular position, what has happened? Uh, some of these positions have been reclassified, they've been sent to CSU for reclassification, and the positions have been reclassified upward to better comply with the actual duties that that, that that person is doing. So, some of the positions have been reclassified, and they've been reclassified upward, which means that it benefits the employee more. So that's one of the things that's happened, and that's in this particular slide. The other thing that's happened is, we've looked at those positions, typically, these are the positions that were, are completely paid for by a grant. Typically, these are the positions that were, are completely paid for by a grant. We took that position, if it did not need to be reclassified, we took that position and moved it out on the pay scale to step C. That's three steps, moved it out on the pay scale to better benefit the person in that position. That was one thing that was done. But we also took that same position and said, if this person started to work here in 2013, but they were not typically receiving all of the colas that a general government employee was receiving. So we took that position, started it, that employee started in 2013. And we applied all of the colas to that position as if the person would have received them. So we took that, using this person, for example, that may have started in 2013. And we went all the way through January 20th. That's the last time we received a pay increase. We applied all the colas. So we said, which is most beneficial to the employee? If we apply all of the colas to their base salary or if we move them out on the pay scale, three steps? And we said, which one is most beneficial to the employee? And whichever was most beneficial to that employee, that's what the amendment in terms of the recommended adjusted pay that you're seeing here today, to try to best benefit that employee. And that's in every case that's in the ordinance here. And so in summary, the grants policy, as we talked about earlier, the grants policy and changes on there are designed such that all positions that are funded by a grant will be classified on the city's pay plan. And all positions that are funded by a grant are not to receive any additional grant supplements outside of what that position is already classified for. And then to the ordinance, the changes in the ordinance, which is what I've just described in terms of those positions. There are, as you see, there are four positions there. The ordinance sets the pay and the classification for these employees in the grant-funded positions. The change in the pay grades in these positions reflect the value of those positions. And those positions are listed here. The custody investigator moved to an adult drug coordinator. The victim advocate investigator moved to a victim witness program administrator. The victim advocate to a victim advocate investigator. And then lastly, a grant compliance accountant moved just one pay grade from a grade 19 to a grade 20. So that's in summary in terms of what we are asking for, the approval of the grant policy and this ordinance.
Ms. Halliwell, I have one question. On the handout you gave, recommended adjusted pay, the proposed amendment ordinance that we had had the compliance accountant going to 5346689. And what you've handed out says 5757799. Is that the right? Just want to make sure the numbers are right.
Absolutely, I'm checking. Oh. I'm sorry, did you have 5346689?
There is on the amendment. Is that supposed to be one of the adjusted pay recommendations?
Yes. So it should move to 5346689.
Which one is that on the handout?
It is actually not on the handout that you have.
Okay.
It's not on the handout, but it's in the ordinance.
And that's the compliance accountant?
Correct.
All right. Ms. City Manager, you got comments?
Yes, and I will just say to the mayor and council that we've got a problem and we need to fix that problem. When it came through the budget process and I determined that something just didn't look right, I talked to the finance director, I talked to the HR director, and asked for a report. And I shared with you at the last meeting. When I got that report, I was even more concerned. And so then I asked for the internal auditor to get involved. And the internal auditor came to council and asked to do an internal audit on this concern. Even when I shared it with the internal auditor before he could look into it, he said to me, this does not pass the smell test. That's your auditor, our auditor. And so as he went through and he did his work and came back with his conclusion, you saw the internal audit report. And there was, he had a lot of strong words in that report. And the bottom line is the auditor determined that there is a problem. He confirmed the city manager's reaction that there's a problem. And so the auditor made some recommendations to this council. And I've been around for a while. In fact, I was here when this auditor came on board. And as the auditor has gone about doing his work, I don't think there's been one occasion where the council took action that was contrary to what the auditor recommended to you in his findings. Not one time have I witnessed that. And so I say that to say that I've had the HR director investigate, there's a problem. I've had the finance director investigate, there is a problem. We, you authorized the internal auditor to look into it and he confirmed there is a problem. And we need to fix the problem. And so it was on first read at the last meeting and it was continued to this meeting. I think what the HR director has presented to you is that, is that we have gone through to make every effort to realize that each of these employees involved get the best benefit out of this. So they've gone back to when they were hired. They have moved them out to step C. And then they've applied every cost of living allowance or pay adjustment that have been given to every employee. And that is where their final pay that is being recommended in this ordinance landed. It is the right thing to do. And I said, I'm concerned that we are... I know you want to get it right and we want to get it right too. But, and I know it's difficult when you get a call or a visit from a superior court judge when they are saying, we basically don't want this to happen or you to go too far from where they are. But as your professionally hired city manager and your internal auditor professional and your HR director and your finance director, we have presented to you what we propose and what will fix the problem and what will put us in a position that we don't have others doing what we have at this point going forward. And I can tell you, if we can't, if we... So we're all the professionals who are not elected officials are making the recommendation to you. And so I believe in treating all employees the same across the board. And so whatever happens here with these, I want to make sure that every other grant position in this government gets, they are treated the same way. So whatever happens as it comes out, then I want to go back and apply it to workforce investment and CDBG and METRA and so forth and so on down the land. So I think it's important for us to get it right or we set a precedent and we got to go back and we got to treat all the others alike. But when you've got a pay grade 16 who earns more than your professionally hired internal auditor, your finance director, your HR director, your public works director with almost 500 employees, a pay grade 16 earns $39,000, not $96,850, we need to fix the problem. It should never have gotten to this point. And so I'm urging you to... The professionals have provided you all of the information, answered the questions. And we've got an ordinance that will fix it. And so I'm urging the mayor and council to allow us to fix it. That's what I've got to say.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. It's really more background than anything else. How often can a supervisor request that a position be reclassified? Is that like an annual thing or any time?
Every year, as we go through the budget process. And we have that every year. Every year they request that, there are many, many requests for reclassifications. And so they can do it every year.
Okay, thank you. And second question. Does the city use any of the grant money to pay for the benefits that we give to grant-funded employees? Or does that come out of the general fund?
Well, we do as long as those grant funds are there. And then it may be a combination of grant funds and general fund money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There does not appear to be any more questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. City Attorney.
Mayor, I suggest we let people in the audience that want to be heard come speak before you look at a vote on this proposed amendment that the handout from Ms. Halliwell.
Okay, anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
I appreciate your time again today and your consideration on the matter before you as it affects a lot of people who work around me and my peers. There's really only one major point I want to address this morning. And it has nothing to do with the pay or the change in pay. I hear the city manager and I think we're all on the same page as to the changes that need to take place. There's a question of what they need to look like. But my biggest issue is the city manager has said multiple times that he got the professional auditor involved and the professional finance director and the professional human resources director. And this is their recommendation and that's why you should listen to them. I tried to paint with a very broad stroke last time I stood here about how the grants process works. But I want to be very clear. I do not have the authority nor do I have the ability to submit these budgets to the federal government. Meaning that when each budget for each of these grants, in detail with my salary, was submitted to the federal government for approval, it was not by me. I have the documents here with me today. I also have the current grants management policy. Under the current grants management policy, and I'll note there's no revision in the grants policy update, there are two individuals within our government who have the right to have an electronic signature and to use that for grants. They also have the right to designate someone else to have an electronic signature to use for the submission of grants. In both of these cases, I have the documents that were submitted electronically to the federal government. The paperwork I fill out, it has Mr. Hugley as the authorizing representative. And then it has the person who he designated to use an electronic signature to sign it and submit it. So for us to go back to the charter and say that the city manager has to approve any change in a person's pay, it's on every document that's been submitted. It was not by me. Was it an oversight? Did we not look at what we were submitting? I don't know. But I didn't submit it. Do there need to be changes in that system? Probably. And I'm willing to work with the city on doing that. But it has been put in a manner that I acted roguely. And that's not true. Each and every time my pay has changed, there have been authorizing signatures. It was not done roguely and it was not done by myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, anybody in the audience, anybody else want to be heard? All right, Mayor. There is a proposed amendment that is consistent with the handout from Ms. Halliwell, except it has the one additional grant compliance accountant reclassification recommended to go to 20E 53,466.89. That is in the proposed amendment also. That ordinance amendment is on the table at this time.
There's a motion from the mayor pro temp that it be amended. There's a second from Counselor Woodson. Any comments or questions concerning the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. All right, hearing none, it is approved.
All right, with that amendment being part of the ordinance now, we'll bring that back next week for a vote on second reading, Mayor. Okay, the next item, Mayor, is an ordinance that would create a moratorium on the use of shared electronic scooters on public right-of-way within Columbus through May 16, 2021. And that is just a recommendation. You can vote on that next week. Are there any questions about that? I know we've had a headline or two come across recently where I think Athens, Georgia also banned scooters on public right-of-way. But that's just, it's going to be up to the discretion of council. Mayor, the next item is the updated restated procurement ordinance. This is going to be codified in the Columbus Code. Instead of being various parts of the ordinance in different places in the clerk of council's office, it's going to put it all together. Ms. City Manager, did y'all want to comment on that at all?
The finance director, Angela Alexander, is going to make some comments.
Good morning. As the city attorney mentioned, this revision of the procurement ordinance really just codifies it and puts it all out there in an electronic format currently. If you go out to MUNICO, which is the record-keeping system that we utilize, you cannot find the procurement ordinance in its entirety. And so this puts it out there so that it's codified. The revisions to the ordinance are really minute. There were a lot of outdated definitions and we needed some revisions to our current processes in terms of what we're actually doing and what it's currently said in the procurement ordinance. ordinance. The most complete version of that dated back to the 70s, and since then, we, we, what the city typically did when there was a need to update parts of it was just to pull out that section and make that update. So this, again, as the city attorney mentioned, just really packages it as a whole. Like I said, we're updating outdated verbiage and processes, adding the land bank authority as an exempt organization to the procurement ordinance now that the land bank activities have come back in-house, and also codifying the change order process that we currently utilize. So that in a nutshell is the revisions to the procurement ordinance, and if there are any questions, I answer them.